The time is now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, January 7th, 2019. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
Mr. Rayzac?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Ms. Peel, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with the board's permission, before we go to our board salutes, I would like to take this time to remember a friend and strong advocate for education, Mayor Tom Weisner, who passed away on December 28th. He was an advocate for education in all the school districts in Aurora, including ours. He was involved in the promotion of early childhood through the Spark Initiative. He was a strong advocate for the John C. Dunham STEM Partnership Schools. He also was a leader for the Pathways to Prosperity Project, looking at career pathway options for Aurora High School students. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. He worked with us throughout his time when he was mayor in a very cooperative and collaborative method, and we'll miss him dearly. And with that, I would just like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Board salutes. Ms. Grover, I think you have one.
Board salutes Niqua Valley student featured on CNN's Young Wonders documentary. The board salutes Niqua Valley high school student Sonika Menon, who was recently featured in CNN's Young Wonders documentary for her charity, the Birthday Giving Program. The program's mission is to provide birthday parties to children and adults affected by poverty, addiction, abuse, violence, and physical or mental challenges. Congratulations, Sonika.
Thank you. And Ms. Demming, do you have one?
Yes. White Eagle Elementary students artwork featured on holiday card. The board salutes White Eagle Elementary, third grade student Gemma Hagan and fifth grade student Gina Conley for their artwork selected out of over 1,000 submissions to be featured on the STR Partners Holiday Card. The theme for this year's contest was "My Family's Holiday Traditions." Congratulations, Gemma and Gina.
Thank you. Now it's time for our student representative report today. It's from Wabonzie Valley High School. We have Sam Jordan joining us. Welcome, Sam.
Hi.
Go Warriors.
All right. So in athletics, boys basketball competed at the Jacobs Tournament over break and finished second, and their record's now 12-2. Wrestling had a great showing at the Wheaton Warrenville South Ed Ewald Tournament, and the following individuals placed Evan Bruner, Antonio Torres, Michael Foster, Garrett St. Clair, and Charlie Millington. Boys Swimming hosted and were champions at their annual WVHS Aqua Pentathlon. Girls Gymnastics beat Glenbard South in a duel meet right before break with a score of 132.75, which is a new team-high score. Wabonzie Valley is hosting the DuPage Valley Conference Dance Championships on Thursday, January 10th. Varsity cheerleading placed second at both the Oswego East and Sandberg Invites. In academics, as we start second semester, we will welcome the class of 2022 on January 16th with our open house welcome events. We also celebrate the academic successes of the class of 2019, the first one being IP Scholar, which will be held on February 6th. The IP Scholar distinction is awarded to all students receiving a 3.6 or greater over the previous seven semesters. At that event, we recognize IP Scholar staff, and new this year to the event, we will also be recognizing our distinguished alumni, Mrs. Tamara Wilson, 1999 grad, who is currently one of the world's most popular soprano voices in the world of opera. The distinguished alumni are typically inducted at our green and gold events, but we made a change for this year. Recently, our December Giving Tree received a record-breaking amount of donations for the people living at Hesit House. This took place December 3rd through 14th. Prism, as always, was a big success with people from all around the community coming to enjoy. Wabonzie Valley High School Wind Ensemble recently participated in the Midwest Clinic on Wednesday, December 19th. This convention typically attracts over 18,000 directors, teachers, and industry leaders from over 30 countries. These people make an annual professional development pilgrimage to Chicago, meaning Wabonzie Valley High School is now part of a longstanding music education tradition. In upcoming events, our Mosaic Choir has been invited to perform in conjunction with the Chicago Symphony in a celebration tribute of Dr. Martin Luther King. They will perform at 3:00 at Wentz Hall on Sunday, January 20th, and then at the Chicago Symphony Orchestra Hall on January 21st at 7:30 PM. And once again, once a warrior, always warrior.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On your day off, no less.
It's now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, we don't have any speakers, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. 30 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. And our first person is Audrey Claire. And welcome.
Good evening. I'm here to address the board about concerns on the current development of residential in District 204, specifically to Wagner Farms. It is per the Sector G plan to be retail, mixed-use density, and some senior housing. So I know that the petitioner for that property came before the board, and I believe you voted for no comment, for it to be all single-family, and then there was an addition of a church. So I would just like you to, if possible, reevaluate that decision and perhaps put a negative vote to that proposal, just in an effort to limit the amount of single-family housing. I know that there has been some anomalies lately, probably due to the recession, about the number of children that come from single-family homes versus multifamily, but I do believe time will win out. That single-family does truly generate more housing. And then also the discussion about housing paying for itself, the money that is generated when housing is first developed, doesn't particularly work. I found an old article back in June of 2001, and it was about discussions between District 204 and the city. And at that time, it was Superintendent Gail McKenzie, and says certainly the number of students that any particular plan would generate is a major concern because that brings into infrastructure costs, and those costs are borne by the District 204 taxpayers. So I just want you to, if possible, reevaluate that decision about Wagner Farm, and maybe send a message to the City Council of Naperville that you would prefer to see retail left in that area where it was originally intended, and to have the mixed-use density and senior housing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ari Rosenfall. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank at least all the directors who are volunteers. Appreciate it. I know it's, I've served on many boards, and it's a lot of pain and effort, but I appreciate what all of you guys do. I wanted to echo a little bit what Audrey said. Audrey and I are both part of a group called SHOW, which is the South Homeowners of Wheatland. It's made up of about 23 homeowner associations in the Wheatland Township area, many of which are in Naperville and in 204. You know, we, for a number of years, were involved in some of the planning decisions, and you know, the master plans for Naperville in particular, and looking to try and increase commercial, senior housing, things like that. And we are concerned. There are actually two projects. One is the Wagner Farm that Audrey mentioned. That one is a conversion of commercial and senior housing in medium-density multifamily. We understand that, you know, high-density, you've probably done some studies, that that may generate more kids, but the medium-density is probably still not at the level of single-family. But there's another project, which is also going to be up before the city of Naperville, and that's the Showplace. Showplace, they're looking to take about five and a half acres that was designated for commercial, retail, or office, and put that as high-density multifamily. So again, you know, our point is this, we understand that as a school board and a school district, you're stuck with what the city approves. We get that. Certainly, if they provide kids, you're going to have to provide the education for them. We understand that. On the other hand, the city of Naperville, unlike maybe some other municipalities, actually listens, I think, to 204. And to the extent you express concerns, they will certainly be hesitant to make those changes. You know, we were at the Plan Commission meeting, which unanimously recommended approval, but you know what? The first thing every Plan Commissioner asked the developer's attorney was, what's the position of the school district? And guess what? Their response was, "School district doesn't object." They've decided to be neutral. So look, our point in coming out is to tell you, this is the time to get involved. You know, what I don't want to see happen is, you know, taxpayers, we already know about Fox Valley, and we're going to get slammed most likely with that. And everything that, you know, other changes in the district are going to further compound that. So this is the time for you, as a board, to speak and to tell them that you do have objections and that you would like to see the plan or the development according to the plan. And I think that's a fair statement. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Sheehy?
Ari and Audrey covered my topics, so I won't be too complicated.
Thank you. Doug Hadad?
Yeah, I'll bore you.
Come on, you all get paid, right? I actually mean to start off by saying thank you for putting your time in on the board. I've been in the community since 2002, and I have not, we've had a great experience with the school district, and currently I have two children at Wabonzie, and we're thrilled with, you know, a lot of great qualities in the community. And so to Ari's point and to Audrey, I'm also part of the South Homeowners of Wheatland Group, have been active in the community, advocating to the city of Naperville on several projects. And Ari is correct that they really do, the developers will utilize sometimes what the school board, you know, input is, as sometimes a quick kind of, hey, everybody likes this. This is great. There's no problem to it. And I know that when, recently, we've learned about a lot of potential new housing that's going to go in, and it's going to create possibly a larger population, I think this would be the opportune time to kind of ask maybe to not be taking, you know, to at least address the fact that what's coming potentially in the future is going to create a need for us to possibly pay more taxes or support more students coming in. And so it might be, I think it would be a great idea to advocate that, you know, there's some concerns that as these new developments are coming in, it's not the time to take property and just turn it into residential so quick without looking further. So that's all I can...
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We begin with our superintendent report.
Okay, we'll start. We welcomed our staff back from winter break today with some professional learning, and I want to thank our law enforcement partners from the cities of Naperville, Aurora, Bowling Brook, and the, along with the DuPage County Sheriff's Department, for partnering with us for our Alice Active Threat Training today. Our elementary staff took their turn for having that today. We also had instructors from Linden Oaks and West Aurora District 129 who helped us out. It's a huge effort to do as many staff members as we need to do. So we're fortunate to be in a community that's looking at this as a regional approach to safety and that we're all working together to help each other. It is hard to believe, but the second semester starts tomorrow, right? That means our VEX robotics competitions will be starting, and our first hosted tournament will be for high school and middle school teams on Saturday, January 19th at Niqua Valley High School. The event starts at 9:30 and runs most of the day, sometimes into the evening. It's historically been the largest robotics competition in the state. All of our high schools and middle schools have teams that will be involved, and we encourage you to stop by if you have time to check out the action at any time. And we again want to thank the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for providing us the funds to help expand our robotics club opportunities for our students. And lastly, Young Hearts for Life, Edward Elmhurst Health, and the Indian Prairie Education Foundation will be hosting Young Hearts for Life cardiac screenings program again this year for all of our District 204 high schools students. It's the sixth time District 204 has hosted this free program for students at all three high schools. Young Hearts for Life is a heart screening initiative involving a very simple, three-minute test that is for all students at no cost, and the goal of the program is to screen high school students and identify those who must be most at risk for sudden cardiac death, which is estimated, believe it or not, to claim the lives of more than 60 young adults each week in the U.S. And I believe we have identified, in every year that we've done this, we've identified a student who has needed some sort of treatment because of the finding out from the screening. So the program's free and available to all of our students, again, thanks to the generous financial support provided by both the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation and Edward Elmhurst Health. But it does take lots of community volunteers, and so we need volunteers for these upcoming screenings. You don't need any medical knowledge to volunteer, but you do have to attend a training prior to volunteering. So Matia Valley is up first. Their screening date is January 24th. They're trained, so the volunteers would need to be trained on January 23rd, and followed pretty closely by Niqua Valley on January 31st, with their training being on January 30th, and Wabonzie must be our last one, a little bit later in the spring. So information is available on our website, so please consider helping us out with this very important program and consider volunteering. That's what I have.
Thank you. Now move to consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through G.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through G as presented.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move to our action items. We just approved several board policies. They were simple in nature. We have a couple here that perhaps need some further discussion. So perhaps we should have a motion on each one separately. So can I have a motion to approve policy 2:80, Board Member Oath and Conduct?
Make a motion to approve Board Policy 2:80, Board Member Oath and Conduct, as presented.
For a first reading?
For a first reading. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Okay, so I asked this to be put on as an action item, just because it seemed like if we're going to talk about striving together to, with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, the board has created, that we should use our future-ready vision that we just got done working on. So I proposed, it's in here, right, Karen? My proposal?
I don't, I think I sent it out to all the board members in an email. So I, you want me to read what you had? So Kathy's suggestion for that section, that last paragraph is, "I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision that every student shall be future-ready by fostering excellence for every student in the areas of knowledge, communication, resilience, and citizenship." Now Kathy, I think you were looking at our Portrait of a Graduate?
Yes, I was.
But we missed a few of them.
Yes. I did the inner circle, but I didn't do the outer circle, because I was thinking it was like a subcategory thing, but it's not. So we would have to include all those words. So we were thinking maybe instead of saying all those words, we would say, what, "future-ready candidate," right? Karen, you had a suggestion there.
Fostering excellence for every student in the areas of knowledge and the Indian Prairie 204 Portrait of a Graduate competencies. And then we could list the competencies if you want, but there's six of them.
Just throwing it out there.
To list them. I think that's, I think this is a lot to begin with, like all the different things that you have to say when you get sworn in. I was like, wow, how long is this going to go on for? But personally, I wouldn't want to list out all those items. I have a question. Like, does our oath vary from a standard oath that the state recommends?
Very much so.
Yes, it does. Okay.
So every other elected official has a very simple oath. It says, "I shall follow the Constitution of Illinois and the United States." Governors, county, township.
President.
Illinois State Board of Education, regional superintendent. It's like a two-liner. School board, we got to read this three-page thing.
But when you say we have to read it, is that the Illinois School Board Association recommendation, these words, or have we done something different in our district?
So the, I mean, it's in the Illinois School Code.
In the school code. Oh, okay.
But it does say, we could, it's just substantially in this form. So we can deviate.
But have we deviated before, or is this exactly what the School Board Association has recommended?
I don't think the oath has come up in the School Board Association issue.
School Code.
To answer your question, since I've been attending school board meetings, 2005, we've, the board has, when they've done the oath, has always followed exactly what the state has said a board member should say. Now, previous to us going into using press to help create our policies, we did have a lot of policies as a board that the board wrote themselves prior to 2010, when we went to, or 2000, no, 2012, I think, when we went to press. So like Justin said, you can amend this oath. Every district has that option, but the things that are outlined here, you have to follow according to, you know, what the state, Illinois Code statute is. You know, and I agree with Kathy's idea. My only concern there is somebody will just need to be always paying attention to, like, you know, if we alter Portrait of a Graduate a year, two years, three years from now, we'll have to alter this. And I wonder if Portrait of a Graduate isn't covered in that second highlighted item, which is, "I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Indian Prairie School District." You know, I like Kathy's idea of calling it out and making it known and public, but I also wonder if it's covered under that as well. So I'll let everybody, I'll go along with whatever the majority is. So I'm fine with either way.
Anyone else?
My question is, these duties are what our duties are in our district goals. We say some of these already. So could we say as outlined in our district goals, or can we say it that way?
It's school code, right? It's school code.
Yes.
For whatever reason, the people who are not reimbursed for their position have a longer oath.
They like to tell you what to do.
The higher up you are, the shorter your oath.
If you do look at everybody else's oath, it stops in that first paragraph. None of this further swearing stuff. So it's just the solemnly swearing stuff. The further swearing, you won't find in any other office position elected in Illinois or the federal government. They don't further swear. It's an oath. And so, once you start throwing other stuff in an oath, it, I mean, it has consequences. You know, technically, somebody can be thrown off a school board for violating this oath. And so if we add stuff to it, now somebody can, there can be a deemed vacancy if we don't live up to some of these things. So I'm, you know, in my keep-it-simple world, I would delete everything after the first paragraph and move on, and call that substantially complying with the school code.
We don't have that choice, though.
The school code says we've got to substantially follow, we've got to have an oath that substantially follows this.
This, meaning the first paragraph?
No, the whole thing.
Well, essentially, you could make the argument that the first paragraph covers everything, if you...
Sure. It's exactly what I'm saying.
My opinion, truly, my only thing was to align it with what we're doing. If you want to go to just the first paragraph, that's fine, too. But I just want to, if we're going to say all these words anyway, we might as well throw in our own words that we're doing.
Let me ask you this. Could we, as a board, when new board members are sworn in or re-elected and re-sworn in, could those board members just do the solemnly swear and not the further swear, but keep the further swear as policy, or if you keep it as policy, you pretty much have to read it and follow it as stated?
It says, your policy says, "Before taking his or her seat, thou shalt take the following oath of office." That would be the whole thing.
Susan?
I love the, I like Kathy's idea of inclusion, but as I look at this, for me, I almost feel that when we talk about advancing the vision of Indian Prairie School District, creating, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and blah, 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 if we're going to have to say this, I almost feel that it's covered, that it's covered there, especially with advancing the vision of Indian Prairie School District. So I think it's a lot of verbiage already, so that's my feeling that it's covered.
Okay, so if no one else has any other comment, call the question. Mark's motion is one in which we're approving the
As-is.
...policy as-is, without additional words. Are we good? Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
No.
Could you have made, you could make a motion to have
Mr. Raisak?
Aye.
There's a motion on the floor.
Ms. Demme?
Aye. Motion passes six one. We'll be back with this one for a second reading. I now need a motion for first reading for Policy seven, colon two seven zero, administer, administering medicines to students.
I'll make a motion for Policy seven, two seven zero, administering medicines to students for first reading.
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, so, so this policy is being amended for designated caregiver administration of medical cannabis. I asked for this to be under discussion first as an action item because this is a pilot program, and it involves cannabis, and it's an unusual step that schools are being asked to take. And I think we should inform ourselves as well as we can about what this is going to look like, so we, we know what's going on in our schools with, in regards to this. I don't really have an amendment to make to it, but I thought we should be informed.
So it is part of law, but can you please explain how you interpret this policy, Kristin?
Sure. Well, the, the history of this is that it originated in Schaumburg School District fifty-four with a student by the name of Ashley who had debilitating seizures. And she was not allowed by the school district to get her medical attention and treatment that had been prescribed. So this litigation and, and legislation came about as a result of that. There are certain qualifications that you need in order to partake of the medical cannabis. You have to have a qualifying condition, and that's described as a severe, debilitating, or life-threatening medical condition. So some of those conditions would include cancer, HIV, muscular dystrophy, seizures, and epilepsy. So we're not talking about recreational use. We're talking about individuals who have life-threatening situations, and they require this treatment. It's prescribed. It has to be given by a designated caregiver or parent. There's a registry. There has to be production of a registry card. So we don't have school staff housing the product. We don't have school staff administering the, the treatment. It's to be done. It can be done on school grounds. And the caregiver or person administering would come, administer to the student, and then leave the grounds with that product immediately. And that's what the policy entails.
So I was happy to see that the delivery methods, because obviously, you know, you don't want smoking or vaping or that type of thing. And, you know, in my opinion, you know, if, if a student is prescribed this by a doctor, there, there's a, a severe case of what's going on with the student, such as the student, you know, with the seizures.
Yes.
I was happy to see the protocol as far as removing it from the school premises. But what a, a big red flag for me was is that remove it from the school premises or the school bus. And I'm like thinking to myself, why isn't, what, where does the school bus come in there? Because if they're coming from home, going to school, you know, there's maybe, at the most, maybe an hour spent on the bus, and vice versa, when they're going home. So I, I was very curious to see, to understand, and, and maybe you don't know, and if you follow up, that's fine. I'm okay with that, because this is first reading. But I, I had a serious concern about the school bus part of it.
I would not anticipate it would be through the daily comings and goings to and from school from home. I would imagine that those situations would be perhaps a field trip, where maybe a parent would need to go to the location and administer in a, in a place that's private, and to protect the confidentiality of the student, and to cause as little disruption. Those would be decided on a case-by-case basis. But I was not anticipating, nor do I think our health services were anticipating, that this was going to be done to and from school from home. It would be more longer trips.
Yeah, I would, I would, and I'm okay with keeping it in there, but I would just like that to be clearly identified case-by-case basis through it, school, the school administrative policy, you know, not necessarily district policy, but where that gets outlined, because that, you know, was a big red flag for me. So, but I understand. Thanks for explaining.
Is that good enough to have it just in the administrative part, the, the clear definition of what that looks like? I'm, I'm just wondering, yes?
I believe so. I think every case is gonna be so individual, it would be hard to develop a protocol to say where on the bus, or what, how those details would be. I've spoken to our district, the head district nurse, Linda Hurtwald, and she and I spoke this morning about consultation between administration and the health services to outline every detail of every case. But they would be so individual, it'd be, it would be hard to make a, a rule or a standard.
So you, you mentioned, you mentioned that each case individualized. One of the things that stuck out to me, and I'm just not familiar, oils and ointments, from a standpoint of those potentially perforating, you know, the air, or is that, or any of those, how we would find out exactly what the, how it's administered, and if there's any concern or cause for anything going into the air impacting anybody else?
Right. Again, health services didn't indicate that there would be any risk of transmission of, of anything, but they would certainly talk about that, and, and how it is to be done, and, you know, exactly where in the school building. I know that was previously another concern, is that we would talk about on an individual basis, where is the school nurse office? Does it make sense to have it there? So all of those details would be really on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. I've, I've had, so we, I, there were the three concerns. One was where was it gonna be done? The bus was, so I can't remember, but it's the, the, there was a third?
If a student.
What, if a student has, is carrying the product on them, how do, you know, I don't want kids, you know, getting penalized for actually taking their own thing with them by accident, or forgetting, or not understanding the law or, or the policy. So what, what have we thought about that, and what does that look like?
Well, if the student decided that they weren't going, that they chose not to get treated by a caregiver or their parent, and they decided just to bring the, the product to, to school and administer themselves, that would actually violate our medication policy.
Okay.
That, we don't have a policy that, that allows for the self-administration. So that would be a violation of our policy. So it, it wouldn't go unnoticed.
And that's already in our policy?
Yes.
Okay. Another question, I, a couple of questions I've had, just been thinking about it. If, and I guess this is just covered as with any other medication, but there, if there's adverse reactions from them using the substance at all in school, our liability is the same as anything else then?
As any other medication. Yes, it's a, it's a medical treatment. So, and our health service, not, uh, health service office would always know about the, the condition and the student.
Okay. One of the things that it, it sounds like, oh, good, the person who is administering the, the cannabis is registered. But when I went to look up something about that, it was saying that the person who applies for, as a designated caregiver, does not need to submit fingerprints or consent to a background check as part of their application. So that kinda surprised me. And, and it just made me go, okay, so now we've got people coming into the school who don't have a background check, and have not been fingerprinted, and are administering medication to someone they know, obviously, but are we concerned at all with that scenario?
I certainly wouldn't say that we're not concerned about the safety of people coming into the building. I, I certainly wouldn't say that. I don't know that we would, again, and I hate to go back to, it's a case-by-case scenario. I would imagine that most of the caregivers would be the parents who would be administering. But I think we would, we would have to look at that as, as far as frequency and time in the building and supervision, and treat that person as any other guest to the building.
I would say they would just get screened through our, our regular screening program like any other person. If something came up, yes, that statute might not require them to have the background check or the FBI check. We, I would assume, us as a district, we would say, hey, you need to get another certified caregiver to administer this than somebody that has, that's in your family, that, that doesn't have a felony, or whatever the case may be.
Right. They would be treated as any other guest to the building.
Yeah.
Another question I had was, the, the substance or the product that they're using, would we be requiring it to have the packaging on there so that we know the ingredients, and we know that it is actually, I don't know if you can even call it certified medical marijuana, but, but do we have any kind of ideas about requirements like that?
We don't have additional requirements, but beyond what the law allows for. So that if they have the registry card, and they've, they've gone through the steps to register, we don't double-check that, that product, much like we don't double-check insulin dosages and prescription medications. We say it's been prescribed, and, you know, that it's given to the student.
But it is in a prescription bottle, right, with their name on it?
Correct.
And?
Yes.
And maybe I'm wrong, but I, see, so from what I'm understanding, and this is why I, I thought we should be informed, medical marijuana that you can get from the dispensaries, it's not like a prescriptions prescription. And you can be limited to a certain amount. And I think if it said two and a half ounces or something. But it's, I mean, there's three FDA-approved drugs that have cannabis in them. But these are not FDA-approved drugs. So it's not prescribed like a prescription normally. So, I mean, so I, I do feel like this is a very different road we're going down. So I just wanna ask questions about it. And even, even though it's, we would treat it like other prescriptions, it's not a true prescription. And so I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, is there any areas where we wanna be more proactive and more safe in, in regards to it? Not to limit it, but to at least be more aware of what it is they're using, and how they're using it, and making sure it's being done correctly. Those are the questions I have.
Well, that's a good point, because these cultivation centers, they can go to any of them, right, and get it. So and since we don't, with any other medications, require a label or, or anything like that, whether it be insulin, or whatever it is.
We don't? I thought we would. We don't have, I mean, somebody can't just bring in some pills and say, I need these, right?
Right. They have, if a student is taking a prescribed medication, it needs to have their name on it. It needs to have the date, and needs to have a prescribed dosage.
So, so regarding the cannabis, should we also be requiring to have a copy of the actual doctor's order in addition to?
I think I would hesitate to, to implement anything that might look like you're restricting or making it more difficult for somebody, somebody to, such as a student who has a debilitating seizure disorder, an additional requirement that makes it more difficult for them to access this. I, I think that, that could be a cause for concern from parents.
I know one of the medications that has been FDA-approved is for seizure disorders. So they actually have a prescription available for that. But, yeah, it's not to limit it, but it's to, actually, to protect that student, in that making sure they're getting what they're supposed to be getting. I guess that's where I was at with that. I, I don't know. I think this is a big experiment that a lot of districts are going through, and we're all gonna be trying it all about the same time. And I know it's the law at this point. And I guess we approve a, a law that's an experimental process right now, and maybe we amend it as we go forward. But do you guys understand why I thought you might wanna know about some of this?
I, I did have, there, there was a comment in here that, I'm, just need a little clarification. The Designated Caregiver Administration of Medical Cannabis section of the policy is void, and the district reserves the right not to implement it if the district or school is in danger of losing federal funding. So.
Good question.
So what happens is, we also have a competing law known as the Drug, Drug-Free Workplace Act. And that's actually what, to another question, prohibits staff from accessing medical cannabis on school grounds. This law is, is exclusively for students. So if we allow the caregiver or parent to remain on the grounds, let's say they administer the cannabis to their student, and then they volunteer and, and stay, and they have that medical cannabis on their person, that would, that would be cause for violation of having a drug, drug-free workplace and, and a drug-free school environment, and that would risk the federal funding. That's what they're referring to. So in order to address that, language was put in our policy, and it's just a small word, immediately, our requirement is that the caregiver or parent immediately leave the premises. And, I mean, they could go home, and then they can come back and volunteer, but we're requiring them to immediately leave the premises.
And does that mean they leave the premises, go to their car, put it in the car, and come back? Or do they have to get it off of school property, too?
They should get it off of school property.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got two points I wanna make. On the, so, a, an employee cannot be designated as a designated caretaker, correct?
Correct. We're, we're not taking that responsibility, nor are we being asked to under the legislation.
Even if the employee is a parent?
Well, that raises an interesting question. I would imagine they
They would have to be off of our time.
Because then, yes, they'd have to immediately leave then the premises.
Off our time. That's right.
And go home, or wherever they would.
Carry that stuff around with them.
That's right.
Could they do it on their lunch break?
Okay. And then, I think we need to amend Policy eight, colon thirty, because it says, "No person on school property at a school event, including visitors, students, and employees, shall perform any of the following acts, use or possess medical cannabis." And so it seems that we now have a policy which disagrees with this policy.
Well, technically, no, because they still can't use or, or carry.
Or possess?
Or possess.
Visitor can't possess?
Not unless they come and then go. They can't just meander at a football game and possess it.
Okay, so the public's gonna read this and say, I'm a visitor, and I, and I can't possess, but if I'm a designated caretaker,
Then I have the authority, because of my registry card, to provide this treatment and then leave.
Administer and then depart.
Okay. I, I think we should amend eight thirty to provide more clarity. You know, unless they're approved under the other policy, something as simple as that. I mean, this reads that you can't come on the property with the stuff, as simple as I can say it. And then we have another policy that says you can't.
So I guess that's something we should look at.
What policy?
And discuss, and maybe even ask I A S B.
Eight thirty.
I think it'd be wise to call I A S B, too, with that, at least to get some kind of an opinion, and then we can go from there. I hear what you're saying. I'm gonna call the question. If I don't hear any, there's a motion to approve for first reading.
reading, Policy 7:270, administering medicines to students. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Spiel.
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Rezak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rezak?
Aye. Motion passes. We now move to our discussion portion of our meeting. We have our external auditor report. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. With me tonight, you've got Matthew Shipley, who's our comptroller. And I think this is his first presentation in front of the board. And I'm going to come right out of the gate and say that he's done a spectacular job in the business office, working on our finances, working on our audit. He's done some tremendous work with ESSA reporting. And you'll see a little presentation on that at an upcoming board meeting. And I'm really proud that he's in the business office, supporting the functions of the school district. Also with us is Andy Mace. He's a senior auditor with Klein Hall. And they are a new audit firm that we brought to the district this year. If you recall, about a year ago, the Board of Education asked us to go out for a request for proposals to see we could find an auditing firm that could serve us. And Mr. Rezak was a part of that process, was involved in interviews and vetting a number of individual organizations that wanted to work with us. And Klein Hall was selected, and this is their first audit with us. So we're pleased to have been working with them. Andy's got more than 30 years of experience in the business. Their office is very close, so that made it very convenient. And I think the audit process went very smoothly. With all of that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and Andy, and they'll go through some of the highlights of the fiscal year 2018 audit.
So, good evening. As Jay mentioned, I'm Matt Shipley, the comptroller for the district. And I'd just like to provide a, an introduction of our audit firm and then a brief overview of the audit process from management's perspective. As Jay mentioned, this was the first year Klein Hall served as our external auditors. And they are a local firm. They're located on 75th Street, just a couple blocks away from here. But they also have extensive school experience, working with many Illinois school districts, including several of our comparable districts. So we believe Klein Hall was a really good fit for us that provided both the knowledge of our, our community and our local area, but also the expertise necessary to serve a district of our size. Andy and his team were responsive, collaborative, and professional throughout the process. And I do want to take this chance to thank Andy and his team for their help in meeting all audit deadlines. The audit process is a thorough process that includes reviewing the district's policies, procedures, and internal controls, our compliance with state laws, and our compliance with various grant agreements, as well as a thorough review of our financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th. The auditors performed their preliminary work in May, and then we're here at the district for most of September, completing their work. As previously communicated with the board, finalizing the audit was delayed due to an error in a state report which we rely on and include as part of our financial report. The state issued the corrected report in late November, and we worked closely with Klein Hall to complete the audit timely after that. The audit culminates with the issue, it's of four reports, which you have in front of you, and they are dated December 14th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy to cover some highlights of those reports. And then, as Jay mentioned, we'll be available to answer. Any questions?
Thanks, Matt. Nice introduction. You know, Jay mentioned, good job Matt was doing. Matt, you got me thinking about this error that the state made. Matt was actually one of the few people in the state who noticed that these allocations didn't seem right. And consequently, subsequently, the state realized that it wasn't right, resulting in what it was. Matt touched a little bit about what the audit process is all about. It's our job to opine on your financial statement. So we're giving an opinion as to whether your financial statements are presented fairly in a conformly, non-accelerated accounting principles. As part of our audit, we do look at your internal controls, but our audit is not designed to give you an opinion on internal controls. So to the extent that we notice things or have comments or suggestions for improvements, we do mention those. We are required to notify you of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls. We had no such findings like that. We work closely with management, but we report to you. So that's the way the relationship works.
Is that mic on?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, this, I pressed it, but it didn't seem to go on. Because of our vast experience with local school districts, and I'm almost afraid to mention this, I've probably involved, been involved with 750 roughly in local Illinois school district audits. But because of that, we're able to modify, if you will, our methodology. So we know where the hotspots are. We know where the high-risk areas are, and we look at those areas extensively. So with that, I think we are able to provide you with the confidence that we've done a thorough review and, and completed a thorough audit process. This report here is in the form of a comprehensive annual financial report. And very few, really only about 40 school districts in the state, go to the added effort of preparing a comprehensive annual financial report. What makes it different is that it includes an introductory section which talks about what's going on within the district. And then there's a whole series of statistical tables, mostly tenure data, so you can see where the district's been and where, and look at some trends in all areas, in revenues, expenses, demographics, tax base, debt capacity, that sort of thing. Matt did mention that we had this hangup on some required information. The information was new this year. There's a, we implemented a new accounting standard, Government Accounting Standards, Word Statement Number 75, which relates to other post-employment benefits. With that new standard, we're required to report at the entity-wide level the net liability related to other post-employment benefits. So what does that mean to 204 is that you actually have two plans. You have, you participate in the teacher's health insurance security fund plan, or sometimes called TRIP, and then you also have your own district plan. The hangup came on the THIS portion of that. But I'm, I'm glad that my profession has looked to include this information in your financial statements because it is significant. We were required to restate your beginning of year's net position, a result of implementing this, to the tune of $195 million. At year end, the district's portion of the other post-employment benefit liabilities, $196 million. The state's portion of that is 258, totaling about $454 million of net other post-employment benefit liability, meaning that's the liability less any assets. That's the net amount. Well, they're not accumulating any assets for this. The state's treating it as a pay-as-you-go. So to me, that worries me a little bit when I talk to my school districts because at some point in time, perhaps, that might get pushed to the local level. Now, right now, you pay in your statutory required amount, which is, was .88. I think it's .92. It's, we're going to see that creep up. But unlike the pension liabilities that are sitting out there, we don't have the Constitution backing us on this one. So that's my worry, that this sort of thing's going to get pushed to the local districts. Which leads to, you know, a topic I often like to talk with my boards about is, is fund balance. You know, where, where are you at with your fund balances? Right now, you're at about 24, your general fund, I'm sorry, which includes your ad O&M, working cash and tort funds. We combine those and consider that the, the general fund. But right now, your fund balance there is about 24% of operating expenditures. Now, I like to say that you probably heard, you know, that Goldilocks area is in the 25% to 50% range, so, so you're a little short of that. But why do you need fund balance? You know, you certainly need it for, for cash flow purposes. You know, you only get taxes twice a year. You need to bridge those, you need to pay your bills during those other periods. Another reason for some fund balances, you need to be able to react to any capital needs that you might have without having to go out and borrow. And then thirdly, and maybe most importantly, you need to be able to respond to any curveballs the state throws at you. So if this sort of thing gets pushed back, where's the money come from? So that's my take on fund balance. You can see the results of the, the funds, you know, if you, I don't know if you have it in front of you or not. On page, the pages 19 shows the results of operations at the fund level. Okay? There's information before that that it's at the entity-wide level that's full, based on full accrual accounting, which includes all your long-term assets and liabilities. But I know you live in the, in the, in the funds. That's the way you budget. That's the way you operate. This statement on page 19 shows the results of operations for your funds at a macro level. Now, a couple of things to note there. You see that your debt service fund had a $75 million deficiency. That's because you did the refinancings during the year. And those come in underneath the line. But those refinancings resulted in ultimately a 12, roughly a $12 million reduction in debt service cash flows over the life of those bonds, and I believe approximately $10 million economic gain because you were able to call those bonds in. So that's great news. You know, similarly, I shouldn't skip out on the TRS liabilities. On pages, on page 34, it shows you the magnitude of those numbers. The total net pension liability related to 204 is $1,175 million. These are astronomical numbers. Now, the state's on the hook for most of that. Your portion is about $20 million of that. But again, considering the poor financial health of the state, these kinds of things worry me. IMRF, page 40, you have about a $4 million liability sitting out there. But IMRF takes care of itself. You're right, it fluctuates based on the actuarial needs there. Beyond this, there are, there's lots of supplementary information and budgetary comparisons to actual. The district sets out its financial plan and sticks to it. And I think this budget shows that. Beyond that, then, are the stat tables. We have lots of historical information there. One thing I, I like to touch on too, on page 75, these are the student activity funds. And this shows you the amount of monies that run through those, those accounts. Roughly $7 million run in and out of those accounts every year. And because we consider that a risk area, we do look at that pretty closely. And we saw that everything was in good order Additionally, we noted that the district's, both its quartile of where its administrative costs fall as a percentage of its, the state does a calculation. And, and you're in, you're below average on administrative costs per pupil. And you're also, I think, very efficient at your $12,000 operating cost per pupil number. I think those are really very good numbers. So what's, what that tells me is that you're getting good bank for your, for your dollar here. Operationally, I touched on it a little bit, but we saw that the, the district in general, the business manage, our business office specifically, had an excellent organizational attitude towards taking internal controls seriously. It had levels of, of review, and, and I think you're really doing a good job in that area. You know, we just had a couple of, of comments. One related to Treasury's bond, the ROE changed the rules. I think you probably saw the write-up on that. And you fell a little bit below Treasury's bond coverage at some point during the year. And there are a few older outstanding reconciling items on your bank recs. But otherwise, you're really doing a good job. And I think they should be commended for, you know, this is a big operation and they're doing a really good job. That was about all I had. I know that's a lot. I can go into more detail if you want. But if you read, no further than that management's discussion and analysis, I think you'd have a, a good understanding of what went on. But I don't, there's no surprises here. I know that you're well-informed. So with that, are there any questions for me?
You might not be able to do the calculation currently, but what would it take for us to get up to 50% fund balance? So you said we were below the sweet spot.
Yeah, you're 24 roughly.
I'd like to know that figure, whether it's now or later. Thank you.
I guess, just for my own information, why do only 30 districts provide a comprehensive report like this?
Why don't they?
Yeah.
You know, most districts, probably 75% of the districts in Illinois, report on the cash basis. And it's simple. It lines up, cash basis reporting kind of works with the school district because it's again a June, there's not a lot overhanging. You might have a few payables. You do have some, there's some grant money that you're waiting on. But I think it's simplicity. But also, the level of sophistication in the, in the, with the business people does not allow for it. It takes a, a definite higher level of ability to, to produce this. And the districts just don't have it.
Just because they don't have the processes in place or the manpower?
Well, you need to understand this.
Yeah.
The Shipley's. Right. These government reports are highly, highly technical, and you need that expertise. Now, most of the districts rely on the auditors to help them with that. I understand that. But they just don't see the value. You know, they, they budget on the cash basis. They live in the cash, pay that way. So financial reporting in, in that manner is sufficient to the vast majority of them.
We moved from cash basis to modified accrual about 14 years ago, when Dave Holmes came to the district.
Right.
There was a lot of discussion about the... There was a lot of discussion last year, and I, I guess I'm not hearing it as much this year, but you talked about the pension and whether the state is contemplating, you know, possibly pushing that down to the local level. I mean, is that still an hot topic?
Dr. Sullivan actually pulled me in right after break and said, this is back on the table, and asked me to start working on some calculations associated with that.
Actually, I'm going to ask your opinion. And I appreciate, first of all, you know, great job, and thank you for the information you shared with us. Would you recommend, you know, because I know, as you mentioned at the very beginning, this is a comprehensive report. Do you see there being any benefits of, of having an additional report that would offer opinions as well? I know you look for deficiencies, but you don't necessarily make recommendations. I was just wondering if, if that was something that, or Matt, you can talk about that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that really quick. We, as part of the process, when we reviewed the external audit about a year ago, we also did a proposal for internal audit services. And we actually have the internal audit work winding down as well. And they're scheduled to present to the board in, in the next month or two. So...
Okay.
Next board meeting, yes. So our, our intention was to, to use them to, to really dig down into some of the areas that the external audit doesn't get a chance to address as thoroughly.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah, I might be able to add something to that. I think that's from an operational control standpoint. The report may be what you're getting at, there is a, another form of report that you see the villages and towns and, and those organizations produce, called what we call a popular report, that has limited certain financial information in it, as well as, well, we'd really like to be here, or, you know, more of a place where you could express an opinion. I could share with these guys a sample or two of those.
Well, that's kind of where I was going, and these are conversations that I can have separately with, with Jay or with, with Matt, because, you know, as Justin was alluding to too, we've been talking a lot as a district about where we would like to be and where we would like to prioritize, and, you know, just as Justin had asked, where would, where would we need to be, or where would we need to put away to be at fifty percent fund balance? You know, it, it would be nice to maybe spell some of that out to our community as well, like, like where, yes, this is where we operate, this is where we found our sweet spot, this is where we're getting good bang for the buck, as you had mentioned, you know, at twelve thousand dollars about per student, but where could we be if things were maybe different? You know, so it's just painting that scenario, I guess. So, you know, that's kind of where I was asking where I was going with that, but I'm sure we'll hear more about that at the next board meeting as well. But thanks.
Just not, thanks, thank you so much, it was a great report, thank you.
Thank you, happy to be with the district.
Throw a stone through their office room.
Yeah, well, it's nice, Matt comes over and picks stuff up and drops them.
Our next discussion item is initial research for a technology plan.
For those that are interested, I'm not presenting on cannabis or on the budget, but for those that are interested in the game score, it is sixteen for Alabama and fourteen for Clemson, in case you are following the game. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to come forward to the board. Last talked with you on September fourth, twenty eighteen, about our year in review, and also talking about our annual, our three-year technology plan. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Kathy for joining me here as well, and she's been a wonderful partner to Technology Services and also to me as well, and I wanted to take this opportunity to express that appreciation. So it's been great to work with her at this point. Again, we're bringing this forward to show you the first part of the technology plan, which in the documents you received before this were the future-ready technology plan. This is the research that undergirds the process, and we'll actually bring forward after we do community review of the documents and bring forward our recommendations.
We wanted to highlight for you that this does connect with board policy on six-ten, which is one that we're currently looking to revise based on Portrait of a Graduate work, that talks about philosophy and objectives, as well as six-two-ten on instructional materials, and six-two-twenty with, which is your, the Bring Your Own Technology board policy. We also wanted to highlight that as we work through this process and going through the technology plan and combining it and working with the Curriculum and Instruction Plan and some of those other plans, that you will see, if you haven't already, the connections to the Portrait of a Graduate competencies, and really be able to see how those competencies, that work that we did, comes to fruition for kids, and how is that implemented, and what does that mean for kids in the future. So we wanted to make sure that we brought this forward to you, with the, this being a critical part of where our work will, will go from here, and at the end of the work, when you see the plan, you'll see those connections very clearly.
For those of you that are not familiar, Gartner is a business research organization which provides a large swath of information and recommendations to the business environment. Specifically, you may have heard of the magic quadrants before, where it recommends certain applications or resources that are available. And they've identified a series of business trends that directly impact K-12 education. And these three tenants are really areas that we're looking at when we started our survey and talking to the community in the very beginning. The first was about that simply adding digital to any environment doesn't mean that you're doing transformational work. And so a lot of times what you can see in some K-12 plans are that they're, that adding a Chromebook or adding a projector to a classroom or adding a whiteboard is doing innovative work, and it's much more than that, and involves many more things, including innovative teachers and students and ideas and other things in the classroom as well. The second is that we have to review their approaches that we need in order to optimize our education environment for student success, including a much broader view of our students' needs, and that, again, gets back to Kathy's previous comments about the, thank you, the Portrait of a Graduate piece that she had mentioned previously. The third is advances in technology have really made us and enabled new ways for us to undertake new opportunities for greater insight into the data that we have. So as an example, one of the pieces that we're working on is how do we start bridging a number of these systems that we have and making it easier for teachers and students and other parents to access their information? One less login, as an example, makes everyone very happy, because I think we all have way too many logins when it comes to the end of the day. To give you a background on our, our first survey, this went out on the week of November ninth, twenty eighteen, and it went out to students in grades six through twelve, our direct instruction staff, and then fifteen percent of our district families. I wanted to take this opportunity to also thank, we had just under two thousand responses in a two-week period, which was an amazing turnout for this. We were also, my thanks to Janet and her team from Communication Services, the Educational Equity Group, as well as the Teacher Administration, Administrator Communications Team or TACT for their feedback and support with our direct instruction staff and giving us question feedback as well. Our surveys were translated using Microsoft Translator from English to Portuguese and Spanish, and we received those requests directly from families. As we do more and more surveys and things that are part of this process, we will be using this type of a service to make sure that we're providing access for any family who needs access to these resources or wants to provide feedback. During the process, I just wanted to note that we didn't collect any personally identifiable information. This is really important, obviously, for our students in grade six through twelve, as we stay in compliance with our Child Online Protection and Privacy Act. Our surveys are not very long, they were, the average response time was between two to seven minutes, and we intentionally limited the number of questions, even though, as you can probably imagine, I wanted to ask a lot of questions. The average response time was between two and seven minutes, and focused on areas about how do you prioritize district technologies? What is your feedback and perception on district one-to-one issued devices, especially as we're at the ending of the third-year cycle within that? Classroom technology, specifically asking our students and our direct instruction staff about their, their perceptions and their beliefs in that space, and also about online safety and internet responsibility. And that was a big topic area that I've heard in the period of time I've been here from not only the IPPC, but also from members of our community, about what are we doing to protect kids online, and what can parents do when they're at home for those devices? So this slide really is just meant to be a stepping stone for us to talk about some of these areas, specifically, starting first with future-ready district technology. We overwhelmingly received a saturated response, or the same response again and again, that both our students, our parents and guardians and families, as well as our direct instruction staff, felt that the use of district technology in their education helped prepare students for their future. And when I say that, that's at the ninety-fifth and ninety-eighth percentile responses across all of the individuals, so that was a massive, a massive support piece that we saw. From that, I wanted to use this as a stepstone to talk about digital divide, because I think when I was talking with our IPPC group, there were a number of parents representing students who didn't have access to technology or didn't have access to internet in their home, and were either using the library or other resources to be able to get that access. But we fully acknowledge that there are other things that can be done beyond that space. So one example, we applied for the One Million Project Grant, which is, if you're familiar with that, it's, basically provides hotspot devices for high school students that meet the free, reduced lunch eligible criteria. And so we've applied for that grant, we won't find out until, I believe it's May of this coming year, in two thousand and nineteen, I'm sorry, and that would provide thirteen hundred hotspot devices if we're approved for our high school students that meet the criteria. And so, again, that is the maximum that we would receive compliance for, but again, it can range based on their availability of funds, and that's through Sprint. But what we're trying to do is look at ways in which technology services can be part of the conversation outside of solely just the libraries or wall and premise, or asking students to go to different locations. It also reinforces their use of practicing for the SAT and other materials, so as they practice and prepare for those, they get additional hours or additional bandwidth available to use. The last piece I'll speak to on this, because it's an important topic for families, is it also provides that internet access for the home. It's not just for the student's device, so when that hotspot goes to the home, it now makes that internet available for the family and their space. So, again, it's fully SEPA compliant, but I wanted to touch on this as an important area as feedback we've received on how are we supporting students with these hotspot devices? With classroom technologies, we received feedback from our, our direct instruction staff about that the technology in their classrooms does meet their needs, about ninety-one percent, give or take a half percentage point there, as well as their students' needs as well at the ninety percent spot. From integrating different aspects of the curriculum to teaching innovatively, these resources have supported direct instruction staff in their, in their environments. But we, the question that came through multiple times was, what's next? So, so we've done Chromebooks, we have them now, we have smart boards in our classrooms, but what are we going to do next after our, the end of this three-year plan? So that's the question we're posing to the community. We're evaluating other devices, we're still evaluating the Chromebooks as part of that three-year plan, but what are the other things that the community is interested in? We have ideas, we, we think we have great suggestions, but we'd love to hear, and that's part of what, in the next coming slides, we'll talk to you about our evaluation process with that. Lastly on this that I'll, I'll talk at is the support and services that are improving for our staff and students. So we've been talking about ways in which we can do outreach, not only to our students and to our staff, but also to our families who are looking for additional information. Part of the survey was getting at digital safety and online security, and there were two responses that were in direct opposition to, opposition to each other. One, which said, I have enough information to have conversations with my student about online safety, and the other which said, if there was an online video available for you to watch about suggestions, would you tune in? And there was a sixty, seventy percent range that said, I have enough information, and an eighty percent participation range that would watch additional information on those materials. So it was a little bit, yeah, just wanted to be sure.
If you're going off.
Why not, right? But we kind of threw that trick question in there to make it a less vulnerable question of, if you wanted to know more information, could you? And the topics that came back is the high priority ones across all populations, so students, staff, as well as for families, was how to be safe online to protect ourselves and our information, how to notice and report cyberbullying in school and outside of school, how to use technology for learning, and then also understanding appropriate and inappropriate online behavior. So you probably hear a common theme across all of these topic areas, but we'll be taking steps to do similar to PD On Demand and some other resources we have internally that are two-to-three-minute nuggets of information. We feel like that's a great starting point to get things in front of the community and also provide them with some resources. But again, it's really important that both Kathy and I are talking to you about the, the future-ready technology plan, because they're inextricably linked from curriculum and instruction and technology. I think the days are gone in which the computer sat in the back of the classroom when the Apple IIe computer first came out to the time now, where technology is so integrated into the classroom experience that, that they are, they have to be together and presented in such a way. Kathy, do you want to talk to us about what we've done to this point?
Sure. Our next step is to really gain feedback, ideas, concerns, successes from all kinds of our stakeholders, and we learned a great deal, for those of you that were a part of the board about three years ago when we worked with the District Management Council, at that time it was DMG, DMC now, where we did a lot of investigation and just talking with different groups of staff members, some parents, some of our groups associated with our schools from IPPC, and with our, some of our students. So we'd like to follow that process a little bit and gain information that way. So we'd like to, as you see it there, talk with focus groups, starting with our administrators, our parents, students, and then with staff, and look at different ways to bring people in, because one of the things that we have known for a very long time in this district is that our staff is very innovative, and our parents, as well as our students, also have great ideas. So as we work to develop this plan, we want to hear directly from them about what are their ideas, what's worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, what do they see as the future for their students, and help to craft that and pull that together. Some of the things we may not be able to do, some of the things we would be able to do, but there's a great power in getting that information from the people who will actually be implementing and be using resources, technology, and doing the instruction, and actually the learning through that. So we'd like to use a similar process as that in the next couple of months to work through that. We'll be sending out invitations and gathering feedback in some informal ways, you know, just some general coffee, sit down and talk to Adam about what you think, as well as focus groups that might be a little bit more formalized. So that's our plan, in order to get some of that information. Anyone who's listening now that would like to be a part of that, please let us know, but we'll be sending some of that out. Our first step will be to work with administrators, as well as our association, and talk with them about how we're going to gather that feedback, and what kinds of feedback are we going to gather.
So once we gather that feedback and it comes back, we will return to the board. We're targeting right now for the March Board Meeting for to come back with the plan, as well as the feedback from the community in that process. You're obviously invited to participate in any of these sessions, as well as the focus groups or our tech nights that you meet with our parents or with our students, and we'll be sure to extend those invitations to you as well. So, again, you had a pre-read that included a little bit more in detail piece of information around the entire research process, but thank you again for the opportunity, very much for letting.
Simon, let's start over here. Any questions?
I just had a, just a quick question. Support and services improving for staff and students, and mentioning students and parents, gaining resources, can you just, on the parental end, because there are parents, as you know, that don't have that same understanding even of what their students are using, how they're using it in school and the value. Can you share a little bit about how?
Are you talking about communication?
Communication.
Or access, or both?
Not, not, I wasn't really talking access, but access has been an issue, we, access is an issue. I was really talking more about the communication, but you can share a little bit about the access as well.
So the first one I'll share, I think the biggest thing that we've found is, is just communicating is also a very good thing to do. I say that from the standpoint of programs and resources that are available, we haven't necessarily put on our tech services website or communicated out to groups. So one of them, as an example, our first presentation that we made was about the access program and the Comcast Essentials Program. So in the survey that we've completed, there was a seven percent response that families are engaging in those types of programs. We're waiting on numbers from AT&amp;T and Comcast to see what that type of population is. But the messages we received across the feedback in the survey are that parents want more information about how they manage their students' Chromebook, how do they secure their internet in their house that the Chromebook is protected, but the iPad that the student is using doesn't have that same filter and capability that's set up around that. So a whole host or litany of topics that parents provided in their feedback surveys, but the piece that they consistently communicated was, I go to Home Access Center to check my students' grades and to look at their attendance and check their participation. I also need help when it comes to, and maybe not so many words, I also need help with how do I, how do I solve some of these problems or things that I didn't even know were an issue? So we're using not only the tech services website as a communication vehicle for that piece, we're also doing emails, and we also asked families to sign up to be future participants in, in feedback studies, as well as if they wanted more information about upcoming programs. Janet has been great also about including us in the communications vehicle for the e-newsletter and other resources that, as things are going out across the district. We're trying to get our, our information out there as much as possible.
And I think that's part of what the feedback will be when we talk with parents, is what do you want to know, and how do you want to gather that information? And I also think, you know, our, our greatest connection with parents are the students' teachers. And so how are our teachers connecting now, and what would they like to, do we have the right tools for them to make it easily accessible for a teacher to communicate those same things to parents? And I think some of our teachers have some good ideas about how we could up our game a little bit in that area as well.
Other questions?
I, great plan, great presentation, love it, I love, love the direction we're heading. I'm struggling with the board requirement on approving instructional material and how that plays into all of this, if it does. We've, we've got the policy that says the board has to approve instructional material, and we're changing at a rapid pace here, where we're integrating a lot of different things into the classroom, and some of the content is fluid, it's updated, it's, you know, it's not like a textbook. And so I think I would like to figure out how we come to a happy median or resolution where the board approves some overall structure so that you guys can go forth and teach, and yet we fulfill our duty on approving instructional material and make that a reasonable working way. I had to look up what instructional material was in addition to textbook, and it makes reference to electronic material, and so I, I know we're talking about some hardware here. And so I, I know we're talking about some hardware here and some back office kind of stuff, but eventually there's, there's material presented to students. I'd like to see how we, you know, we, we make that work.
School code's way behind what's actually happening in the field per usual, but this is one area, and I know that we've had this conversation, I have had this conversation with folks at the state board about, they really need to look at that because this is, it isn't just a textbook anymore. And it isn't easy, you can't just pass it around and show it because a lot of the digital resources change.
Absolutely, they're updated frequently.
Yeah, and you're accessing thing, and teachers are accessing things online.
Well, and students are too. Students are accessing for their own learning, you know, they're self-directing, they're looking for something comes up in class, and they're researching it in a variety of different places. So part of it is not only the education of what it is we're providing and supporting, what tools we're providing and supporting, which is, I think, very important for the board to know what those things are, but also how are we educating our students to be able to find the right things and the most appropriate things on their own as well? So it's really, it's a complex process at this point, but I think some guidelines and some things that we can put into place will help support that area, but.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone?
One comment and then question, I guess. As far as the videos go, I, I think we've got a golden opportunity as a district to really be an innovator, to educate our students and our parents as far as being a good digital citizen and the cyberbullying and the social media stuff. I mean, I've talked to many administrators just in the last two years and SROs, and it's become a major issue, as I'm sure everybody at the district knows. And, you know, we could really, I talk to parents about it, and it's eye-opening what parents don't know. And I really think we could be, that could be a great communication tool for us as a district and as a board to our, to our community and to our parents and students. So that was my, my comment.
I'll just add to that, that's, that's not only that education, but it's also social emotional learning.
Well, exactly.
So when you look at social emotional learning and where that's going, that leads right into digital citizenship as well.
Absolutely, and it goes back to other discussions we have with our other partners like 360 Youth Services, and I mean, there's just so many tie-ins there that I just think is wonderful with this technology piece. My question is, and this is, you've heard me say this before, Kathy, you know, I am always concerned, you know, I can't believe it's been four or five years ago, we just started finally doing our one-to-one pilot at middle school, I can't believe it's been that many years. That was a wonderful experience for me as a board member and for all the board members at the time when we got to go and look and see what some of those middle school teachers were doing with technology that was innovative in the classroom. And, and we purposely at that point did, you know, we picked different teachers, right, we picked the ones that had no technology background, the ones that kind of did, the ones that were really way out there. That has always been my concern with technology and one-on-one because, and I'm sure I could have conversations with Allen and with Candy about this too, because, you know, that's my concern as a board member in relation to our teachers, our students, and our finances, is that do we have a good gauge, either at the school level or the, the, the class level or the, the subject level or the teacher level of where everybody's at? Because what I've never wanted technology to be is just to be used for research in the classroom or doing an assignment or Google Docs. Yeah, those things are great, yes, that helps students, but is that really being innovative, enhancing teaching, helping learning, and that type of thing? So that's where I've always been on, you know, I really want us to, again, I've, and I don't mean to make light of it, but I don't want the Chromebook to turn into a paperweight. You know, I really want it to be helping our teachers and our students. So at some point, when we're ready again, I would love to go and see what some teachers are doing. And I think it would just be good, it'd be great for me, but I, maybe other board members would be interested too, because I want to see where we're at there and, and then understand how we're doing those in-services or the, the PD Wednesdays and how we're furthering this throughout the district. So that's stuff I'd love to hear at some point, but.
Well, we have professional learning on the board agenda, I believe it's in March. So we'll be presenting all kinds of different avenues that we're taking for that very piece as well. But sure, anytime you'd like to visit, we have a number of places and people, you could visit anywhere at this point in time and we.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch.
I, I will just, my only hesitation I, I want to say is we don't ever want to say there's an amount of time that every student should be spending.
Correct.
Or every teacher should be spending on instruction with a, a piece of hardware.
Right.
We real, you know, when you look at personalized learning and things, it's all about student-directed and what's best for that student. And so there may be different timeframes where it is more appropriate and other times where it, so I don't see us ever putting a parameter around it, but that education about how to use it is very important, and our teachers have, have really done some really nice work in that area.
Absolutely agree, and I'm glad you clarified that, thanks, yeah.
Any others?
No, go ahead.
My question is regarding the grant. I think it's great for people who don't have internet access to be able to use it at home because sometimes it's difficult to get to the library and all. How long would the grant be for, is it a number of years or?
Sure, it actually follows the student, so if they qualify on their freshman year, they'd have that device for four years. So it's four years of service fully covered by the grant. So it's, it's actually not even any money exchanging from the district, it's all facilitated through the foundation. We're just the steward of transitioning the device to that student and making sure that if it's ever lost or stolen, that we're facilitating the disablement or turning off that device. But it's a four-year supported grant, renewable year after year for new students coming in that aren't covered previously.
And how long, what is the life of a Chromebook?
That's a great question. It depends on how the Chromebook is handled, I'll say that. So we've tried to find the best possible cases, but they're not meant to be run over with cars. So we find that we've planned for in our technology plan and budget for a three-year rotation, which is where we're ended the three-year and are going to be starting into that next cycle. HP has marked them as a four-year life, sometimes five, but we're starting to see devices getting longer for wear at this point, at the middle school level, at three years, where our repairs aren't increasing dramatically, we're, we're not seeing that be the case, but just as new technologies become available, things start phasing out as to what their support is. So we're planning on doing that as the middle school is our first location for replacement of whatever device, if we select a, recommend a device to the board, that'd be the first location to begin with.
So if we know how many students are getting like the, the lunch plan, and if we can anticipate how many Chromebooks we'll need or internet access, is there something we can work out later on when we get the Chromebooks, a new installation of the Chromebooks with like HP or somebody and say, "Hey, can you give us internet access or this much amount," or something like that?
It, it would be wonderful to do so, there's a lot of federal guidelines that prohibit us from being able to accept that, and they, a lot of their ethics departments won't allow them to make contributions to local offices or groups. I've asked that question, and I played the new card just to see how that would play out, and I was immediately met with the answer is no, you're, you're a public organization. But we have looked at ways in which for relationships that we have with current businesses of ways in which we can get sponsorship around different programs, whether it's for repair services for our equipment or train the trainer so that we can repair other equipment ourselves rather than sending them out for repairs and reducing the costs in turn to our families for things that have unintentional damage that went against them. So that's a great question.
Kathy?
I just had a question about the survey, you're gonna go back out and start getting more survey. And it seemed like you weren't real pleased with the, the survey rate or the response rate in your document that you gave us here. So it, are, or do you have a plan to do things slightly different and?
Sure, that's a great question. I, I will say, just as, if it was misstated, my apologies, but I'm, I'm thrilled with the response we did receive, especially from an Adam Smith's that people might not know where that response or that email is coming from. The, while the quantity of the responses was about two thousand out of a sample, sample population that was about thirty thousand, the quality of the responses were very rich. So people took great time to provide detailed information about their feedback, I mean, paragraphs of feedback in comment sections that most people would probably just speed through the text boxes and go, "I'll give you my radio button feedback." So I really, I valued that text-based feedback as well as the responses, but I felt as though we had saturation even with that population. For increasing that, I think one of the pieces that we're looking at is that email is not the only medium for us to gather feedback and gather information from our community. As Kathy had mentioned, focus groups as well as parent nights for us to be able to invite parents or folks in, capturing and recording those sessions for families that can't attend, and offering them an alternative media, medium to provide feedback. Also doing some mailing as well, because I think there's, there's often the, the misstep that we, in this type of a communication endeavor, will only use electronic to do that type of distribution, but there are families that, again, if we know they don't have a device in the home or don't have technology but want to participate or engage, how do we leverage the experience in the classroom with the teacher to provide that connection back to the home as well as through the mail to gather that response? So there's a number of methods that we're looking at to try to reach our community too.
Maybe they thought you were a phishing email.
That's exactly what it was, that's exactly what it was. Thank you so much.
Question, go ahead.
I had a quick question too. You're, each year when school starts and they receive, you know, Chromebooks, because they don't keep them over the summer, correct?
At this time, they do not, correct.
So do we, do we assign the same one for, to the same student each, each year?
We do.
Thank you.
No problem.
So I'm glad we're gonna survey a variety of groups. Do you anticipate some level of disconnect between our young, between our students and our adult population? As I hear both Susan and Mark talk, the words that I heard from our were, "Sometimes they're uncomfortable with technology, and sometimes they don't understand what's going on with technology." And then I, I, I just had some recent visits with some young graduates who just kind of recently graduated from 204, who do know technology and are very comfortable with technology and wish that the district would be doing more instructionally with technology at a faster, quicker pace. So how do you, how are you gonna work through what's occurring throughout the whole world of a younger, more capable, more comfortable student population who craves and wants technology versus a population of people, you know, it could be sixty-seven, I'm gone. You know, after talking to the graduates, I just, oh, what happened to me? You know, but a little bit uncomfortable, wants to make sure safety's there, and the kids are way past that. So can you just maybe, have you anticipated this, what are you thinking? We've really gotta talk to those kids.
We do.
That's okay, I, I think the one thing I, I wanted to note too is there's, there's some feedback that's in some of the research lately that, yes, there is definitely the population of, of students and graduates who have that excelling technology experience, right? They, they can program their own app, or they can build a computer, or they can fix their home computer and walk through how to set up an Alexa, right? They, they can do all those things. But there's also a large swath of students who don't have that experience, who may use the Chromebook to, as was articulated before, to do a Google Doc or to do the things that in a classroom where the teacher is, is really effectively that bridge as the instructional coach around how to use technology, right? That's the, the secondary skill to the material and the types of things that are going on within that space. So that, that digital native concept, right, that, that is that all students are, are adept and understand and are fully fluid. I always try to caution that, especially looking at some of the results from this that we saw from our student respondents, which again was a sliver of our population, but still, even within that group, there was a wide array of feedback and comfort when it came to using technology outside of their Chromebook. So Kathy, I wanted to make sure you had a chance to comment too.
You know, I think there's always a divide as to what students want and what adults think that they need. And so I think that's a, that's a bridge that we've been crossing for a very long time. It looks different now because it seems, you know, we saw when we worked through the Portrait of a Graduate work, that changes come a lot faster. So years and years ago, people had a long time to become accustomed to a change. Now things change so fast, you're not even accustomed to what happened yesterday and something else is happening. So the role of the teacher is to be that coach and to help students maneuver through that. One of the biggest gaps that are, one of the biggest concerns that has been eliminated is that when we first started this work with Chromebooks, and I think when Brad and Al and Stan were going out to teachers, a teacher felt as if they needed to know all about the Chromebook before they gave it to a student. And I think now that we've gone through this cycle, teachers are well aware that I don't have to understand how the Chromebook work, how the Chromebook works, how do I fix any device for a student? Even when we started BYOT, students brought their phones in or something, a device from home, and teacher said, "I don't know how to fix that, somebody else in the classroom did." So I think that's been one of the biggest things that we've been able to overcome, is that thinking that I, as the teacher, have to understand every bit of what's happening or the device I'm giving to my student before I give it to them. So as students become more adept at that, teachers are already understanding that they are more adept at learning, working through the device, taking chances and those kinds of things. My responsibility as the educator is to know what I need my students to know and help them navigate how to understand that and how to support them if they already know it, and how to support them if they're not understanding it, and what tools do I have in order to provide that?
Yeah, the teacher has a whole new role in this, in technology, because they have to have a, a solid understanding of where each individual student that they have is at in regards to, number one, technology, and number two, how to engage that student. Because like Mike said, you might have a student that is way advanced in technology and is bored, or you may have a student on the total opposite end that doesn't like technology and that teacher needs to engage them in a different way or be that instructional coach for that student to get them to use Google Docs. So the, the teacher has a whole new role in this as well.
Well, that's the role a teacher has played when we first start, is we've had students, a wide range of abilities in anything that we've done. So it's a, I think our teachers have embraced that, I think, and they've found a variety of ways to meet the needs of those students. And so our responsibility in creating this plan is really looking at the instruction as well as the technology, devices, resources, citizenship, things like that, in order to help support them so that they can do it even better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't really have a big board update beyond that we, a reminder that on February first, we're gonna have a legislative breakfast. It will be in District 203, the specific location has not been chosen yet. I think it's at seven o'clock in the morning, and we're gonna invite as many legislators, many of them new, who will be coming and engaging in conversation with us. Any other reports?
Oh, yeah, Lauren Underwood event Saturday.
Yep, I guess she's being sworn in. Anything else? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?